Are you ready? Good evening and welcome to the August 8, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting of Walnut Creek. Would the Secretary of State call the row?
Commissioner Kwak.
President.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Clopp is absent. Commissioner Reiser.
Here.
Commissioner Natting.
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Here.
Chair Strongman.
Here. And I'd like to ask my fellow Commissioners if there's been any ex parte communications with any of the applicants on the agenda? Seeing shaking heads, I would say that's no. Moving on to the consent calendar, I believe we do not have anything on the consent calendar. Is that correct?
Yes.
Moving on to item three, public communications. This is public communications that you may speak on any topic that is not on the agenda. If you're here for Chick-fil-A, you will have your turn, but anything other than that, you're welcome to come approach the podium and speak. Seeing no one racing to the podium, I'm going to close public communications and move on to the public hearing. We have one item on the agenda, the Chick-fil-A restaurant at Citrus Marketplace Shopping Center Master Sign Program amendments. And there are two appeals to the Design Review Board's decision. And the way it's going to work is we're going to have a staff presentation. The Council Commissioners will be able to question the staff. Then the first appellant will have 15 minutes. And then the Commissioners will ask questions of that one. And the second appellate will have another 15 minutes. And we will then ask them questions if we have any. At the end of the public testimony, they will have a chance to rebuttal both of them. At that point, we'll have public testimony, and then the rebuttals, and then we will finally close the public hearing. And we will turn it back to the Commissioners for consideration. So maybe we have the staff report, please.
If I may, through the chair, before the staff begin their presentation, I just would like to reiterate for the Commission that the hearing tonight is solely limited to final design review, specifically the appeals on the signs, and not to the entire project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Simmer Gill, Associate Planner with the City. We are here tonight to consider the two appeals that were filed on Design Review Commission's decision of the design review and the Master Sign Program Amendment for the Chick-fil-A that will be located at 229 Oak Grove Road. Both of the appellants, I believe, are here tonight to state their case. Steve Elster is representing the neighborhood appeal, and Nathan Loveland is representing Chick-fil-A as the applicant. And just to orient you with the site, Citrus Marketplace Shopping Center is located at the corner of Oak Grove and Citrus Avenue. It does consist of three parcels that are all developed with commercial uses. The surrounding area consists of a mix of uses, and there are residential areas to the north and east of the shopping center. And just to go over what was under Design Review Commission's purview, the Design Review Commission considered the following items that are listed on this slide. Design Review Commission approved the design and building architecture, and also considered a Master Sign Program Amendment, which we will go into more detail further in this presentation. And just to recap prior approvals, on March 14 of 2024, the Planning Commission did review this project and determine the CEQA exemptions, as well as approve the conditional use permit and the tree removals. And then on March 24, within the 10-day appeal period, the project was appealed on Planning Commission's decision. And subsequently, on May 21, City Council reviewed the entire project, did deny the appeal, and affirmed Planning Commission's decision of the CEQA exemption and the project approval, as well as incorporate additional conditions, one being limiting operating hours to 10:00 p.m. daily. And on June 19, the Design Review Commission approved the design review, also approved the Master Sign Program Amendment, which included a 48-inch-tall letter height for the logo, which is the "C" in Chick-fil-A, deviating from that 24-inch letter height that's specified in the sign program. However, DRC did not approve the third wall sign, limiting it to two sign locations, which is what is currently allowed in the shopping center. And just to quickly go over the appeal process, the Planning Commission tonight is the appeal body, and will conduct this public hearing considering this appeal as a new matter. However, the only final design review is before the Planning Commission tonight, not the entire project. The appeals before the Commission focus on signage only. The first appeal was received from the appellant, who is the neighborhood, requesting denial of the 48-inch-tall letter height. And then on July 2nd, the second appellant, who is the applicant, filed an appeal requesting approval of the third wall sign location. No changes have been proposed to the scope since the previous approvals, so the project continues to be exempt from CEQA, and that was previously determined by the city under the previous entitlements. So tonight, Planning Commission is the final decision-making body. No other further appeals could be made after today. And just to quickly go over the Master Sign Program allowances, two wall signs that are illuminated with channel letters is allowed with a letter height of 24 inches, with a width of signs that shall not exceed 70% of the building's frontage. Chick-fil-A is proposing three identical wall signs, aluminum halo-lit with channel letters, with a letter height of 24 inches for the remaining business name. However, the logo, which is the "C" in Chick-fil-A, will be 48 inches in height. And each sign totals 37.66 square feet in size, and it is nine and a half feet in width. And here are the two building elevations that you see, the north and south elevation, which was approved by the Design Review Commission. However, the sign location that's facing Oak Grove Road, the west elevation, was denied by the Design Review Commission. And then the fourth elevation that you see is the east elevation that's facing the adjacent tenant Panda Express, as well as looking into the Citrus Avenue residential neighborhood, and no sign is proposed there. And just to quickly get into the appeals, the first appeal from the neighbor was for the 48-inch-tall letter height. The DRC did approve that letter height, recognizing that it is the restaurant's business logo. The neighborhood, however, did object to that, and they're stating that the letter height would create a visual blight and also serve as excessive advertisement for this restaurant at the interest of their neighborhood, and that it would result in an impact to their area. And staff's response to that is, given the scale and size of this building, the DRC did note that the larger "C" would not overpower the overall facade of the building. The building's width on all elevations ensures that the increased height would not have any adverse impacts, and it would fit within the designated sign area. The building width on the north and south elevations is 123 feet wide. And then the shortest, the smallest elevation, which is facing Oak Grove, the west elevation, is about 41 feet wide. And no other logos are proposed apart from that 48-inch-tall letter height. The rest of the letters in the business name are lowercase script lettering, and they do comply with the 24-inch letter height. And similar letter heights have been approved in Walnut Creek. There's been a range of 36- to 60-inch-tall logos that have been approved with Master Sign Program amendments. And under the city's sign ordinance, there are no restrictions on letter height if the sign is in architectural harmony with the overall scale of the building. And here are some examples of letter heights in Walnut Creek. I'll start with the top left. It's Mike Kesbroen Company, that is in the Orchard Shopping Center, which is directly across the street from this shopping center. It was allowed to have a 32-inch letter height, and that business linear feet is actually less than Chick-fil-A's linear feet. And Rocco's, which is not an anchor tenant, they have a five-foot-tall logo at the top of their business name. And Pet Smart, as you can see, the width of the frontage of that building is about 23 feet wide. And the sign is basically occupying that entire area, and it's, all the letters are capital, and it's five feet six inches tall. And then another example that is McCollie's, it's in the Countrywood Shopping Center. I use this as an example because, again, this is script lettering with the "M" and the "C" being larger, and that was approved at four feet tall. And then the other one is, again, in the Countrywood Shopping Center, Panera Bread, with the stacked letter height and logo, it was approved at five feet tall. The logo itself is about three feet tall. And all of these shopping centers that I'm referring to are all in neighborhood shopping centers that are near residential areas. And here's a recent example, the Primrose Preschool that will be located, again, in the Orchard Shopping Center. And as you're going out of Citrus Avenue, out towards Citrus to make a left or right on Oak Grove, the first thing you're going to see is that sign at the top, that's the back of the Primrose Preschool building. It was approved for 48-inch-tall letter height or logo height. The applicant for this project was requesting a 60-inch-tall letter height exemption, however, that was not approved. But the Design Review Commission approved the amendment at 48 inches. And here is another example, and this probably isn't the best example because it's not in a residential area, but I am putting this just for context because of the size and scale of the building is similar to this one, and it is a similar use. The Chick-fil-A on the north main location in Walnut Creek was approved for a five-foot-tall logo height, and the overall letter height, I believe, is three and a half feet. Again, same size and scale, however, it's much larger in size than the proposed Chick-fil-A signage before you tonight. And moving on to the second appeal, which the applicant appealed, DRC did not approve the third wall sign, stating that the sign is repetitive and unnecessary. The applicant is appealing this, stating it's ------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------ Are you ready?
Good evening, and welcome to the August 8, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting of Walnut Creek. Would the Secretary of State please call the row?
Commissioner Kwak.
President.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Clopp is absent. Commissioner Reiser.
Here.
Commissioner Natting.
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Here.
Chair Strongman.
Here. And I'd like to ask my fellow Commissioners if there's been any ex parte communications with any of the applicants on the agenda?
No.
And seeing shaking heads, I would say that's no. Moving on to the consent calendar, I believe we do not have anything on the consent calendar. Is that correct?
Yes.
Moving on to item three, public communications. This is public communications that you may speak on any topic that is not on the agenda. If you're here for Chick-fil-A, you will have your turn, but anything other than that, you're welcome to come approach the podium and speak. Seeing no one racing to the podium, I'm going to close public communications and move on to the public hearing. We have one item on the agenda, the Chick-fil-A restaurant at Citrus Marketplace Shopping Center Master Sign Program amendments. And there are two appeals to the Design Review Board's decision. And the way it's going to work is we're going to have a staff presentation. The Council Commissioners will be able to question the staff. Then the first appellant will have 15 minutes, and then the Commissioners will ask questions of that one. And the second appellate will have another 15 minutes, and we will then ask them questions if we have any. At the end of the public testimony, they will have a chance to rebuttal of both of them. At that point, we'll have public testimony, and then the rebuttals, and then we will finally close the public hearing, and we will turn it back to the Commissioners for consideration. So maybe we have the staff report, please.
If I may, through the chair, before the staff begin their presentation, I just would like to reiterate for the Commission that the hearing tonight is solely limited to final design review, specifically the appeals on the signs, and not to the entire project. Thank you.
Thank you. Simmer Gill, Associate Planner with the City. We are here tonight to consider the two appeals that were filed on Design Review Commission's decision of the design review and the Master Sign Program Amendment for the Chick-fil-A that will be located at 229 Oak Grove Road. Both of the appellants, I believe, are here tonight to state their case. Steve Elster is representing the neighborhood appeal, and Nathan Loveland is representing Chick-fil-A as the applicant. And just to orient you with the site, Citrus Marketplace Shopping Center is located at the corner of Oak Grove and Citrus Avenue. It does consist of three parcels that are all developed with commercial uses. The surrounding area consists of a mix of uses, and there are residential areas to the north and east of the shopping center. And just to go over what was under Design Review Commission's purview, the Design Review Commission considered the following items that are listed on this slide. Design Review Commission approved the design and building architecture, and also considered a Master Sign Program Amendment, which we will go into more detail further in this presentation. And just to recap prior approvals, on March 14 of 2024, the Planning Commission did review this project and determined the CEQA exemptions, as well as approved the conditional use permit and the tree removals. And then on March 24, within the 10-day appeal period, the project was appealed on Planning Commission's decision. And subsequently, on May 21, City Council reviewed the entire project, did deny the appeal, and affirmed Planning Commission's decision of the CEQA exemption and the project approval, as well as incorporate additional conditions, one being limiting operating hours to 10:00 p.m. daily. And on June 19, the Design Review Commission approved the design review, also approved the Master Sign Program Amendment, which included a 48-inch-tall letter height for the logo, which is the "C" in Chick-fil-A, deviating from that 24-inch letter height that's specified in the sign program. However, DRC did not approve the third wall sign, limiting it to two sign locations, which is what is currently allowed in the shopping center. And just to quickly go over the appeal process, the Planning Commission tonight is the appeal body, and will conduct this public hearing considering this appeal as a new matter. However, the only final design review is before the Planning Commission tonight, not the entire project. The appeals before the Commission focus on signage only. The first appeal was received from the appellant, who is the neighborhood, requesting denial of the 48-inch-tall letter height. And then on July 2, the second appellant, who is the applicant, filed an appeal requesting approval of the third wall sign location. No changes have been proposed to the scope since the previous approvals, so the project continues to be exempt from CEQA, and that was previously determined by the city under the previous entitlements. So tonight, Planning Commission is the final decision-making body. No other further appeals could be made after today. And just to quickly go over the Master Sign Program allowances, two wall signs that are illuminated with channel letters is allowed with a letter height of 24 inches, with a width of signs that shall not exceed 70% of the building's frontage. Chick-fil-A is proposing three identical wall signs, aluminum halo-lit with channel letters, with a letter height of 24 inches for the remaining business name. However, the logo, which is the "C" in Chick-fil-A, will be 48 inches in height. And each sign totals 37.66 square feet in size, and it is nine and a half feet in width. And here are the two building elevations that you see, the north and south elevation, which was approved by the Design Review Commission. However, the sign location that's facing Oak Grove Road, the west elevation, was denied by the Design Review Commission. And then the fourth elevation that you see is the east elevation that's facing the adjacent tenant Panda Express, as well as looking into the Citrus Avenue residential neighborhood, and no sign is proposed there. And just to quickly get into the appeals, the first appeal from the neighbor was for the 48-inch-tall letter height. The DRC did approve that letter height, recognizing that it is the restaurant's business logo. The neighborhood, however, did object to that, and they're stating that the letter height would create a visual blight and also serve as excessive advertisement for this restaurant at the interest of their neighborhood, and that it would result in an impact to their area. And staff's response to that is, given the scale and size of this building, the DRC did note that the larger "C" would not overpower the overall facade of the building. The building's width on all elevations ensures that the increased height would not have any adverse impacts, and it would fit within the designated sign area. The building width on the north and south elevations is 123 feet wide. And then the shortest, the smallest elevation, which is facing Oak Grove, the west elevation, is about 41 feet wide. And no other logos are proposed apart from that 48-inch-tall letter height. The rest of the letters in the business name are lowercase script lettering, and they do comply with the 24-inch letter height. And similar letter heights have been approved in Walnut Creek. There's been a range of 36- to 60-inch-tall logos that have been approved with Master Sign Program amendments. And under the city's sign ordinance, there are no restrictions on letter height if the sign is in architectural harmony with the overall scale of the building. And here are some examples of letter heights in Walnut Creek. I'll start with the top left. It's Mike Kesbroen Company, that is in the Orchard Shopping Center, which is directly across the street from this shopping center. It was allowed to have a 32-inch letter height, and that business linear feet is actually less than Chick-fil-A's linear feet. And Rocco's, which is not an anchor tenant, they have a five-foot-tall logo at the top of their business name. And Pet Smart, as you can see, the width of the frontage of that building is about 23 feet wide. And the sign is basically occupying that entire area, and it's, all the letters are capital, and it's five feet six inches tall. And then another example that is McCollie's, it's in the Countrywood Shopping Center. I use this as an example because, again, this is script lettering with the "M" and the "C" being larger, and that was approved at four feet tall. And then the other one is, again, in the Countrywood Shopping Center, Panera Bread, with the stacked letter height and logo, it was approved at five feet tall. The logo itself is about three feet tall. And all of these shopping centers that I'm referring to are all in neighborhood shopping centers that are near residential areas. And here's a recent example, the Primrose Preschool that will be located, again, in the Orchard Shopping Center. And as you're going out of Citrus Avenue, out towards Citrus to make a left or right on Oak Grove, the first thing you're going to see is that sign at the top, that's the back of the Primrose Preschool building. It was approved for 48-inch-tall letter height or logo height. The applicant for this project was requesting a 60-inch-tall letter height exemption. However, that was not approved, but the Design Review Commission approved the amendment at 48 inches. And here is another example, and this probably isn't the best example because it's not in a residential area, but I am putting this just for context because of the size and scale of the building is similar to this one, and it is a similar use. The Chick-fil-A on the north main location in Walnut Creek was approved for a five-foot-tall logo height, and the overall letter height, I believe, is three and a half feet. Again, same size and scale, however, it's much larger in size than the proposed Chick-fil-A signage before you tonight. And moving on to the second appeal, which the applicant appealed, DRC did not approve the third wall sign, stating that the sign is repetitive and unnecessary. The applicant is appealing this, stating it's The applicant is appealing this, stating it's overly restrictive to deny this, and because there have been other approvals that were granted in Walnut Creek. And staff's response to that is, the building does have multiple street frontages, and two entrances are located at the corner of two busy streets, and the third sign will enhance the overall visibility and provide identification from different areas or different streets in this area. And freestanding buildings with multiple frontages are typically allowed, one sign per frontage in Walnut Creek for pad buildings. The sign program lacks sign area specifics, is a sign program from 1996, so it didn't really cover how much sign area could be allowed per tenant. However, it does talk about the total width of the signs to not exceed 70% of the building's frontage. The width of the signs for this project does comply. Chick-fil-A's proposal, proposed width is nine and a half feet for each sign, and that totals 28 and a half feet for all signs combined. And with the individual or the combined width, they both remain well below the allowed 86 feet width, if you use that calculation of 70% of the frontage width in the master sign program for the shopping center. And I also wanted to touch on the city's sign ordinance as it defines a building with multiple frontages. Chick-fil-A's elevations does meet the frontage criteria, as two of the elevations are facing public streets, Oak Grove and Citrus Avenue. One elevation, which is the east, provides shopping center access, and the north elevation is accessible from the parking lot. And the only building in the shop, this is the only building in the shopping center that has multiple street frontages. The rest of the buildings are either facing Oak Grove or Citrus Avenue. This one faces both. Chick-fil-A is proposing one sign per street frontage and a sign above the entry doors on the north elevation, which faces the internal parking lot, and the total sign area is 122 square feet. And per the sign, city sign ordinance, Chick-fil-A would be allowed a total of 196 square feet, as outlined in the calculation that I prepared and included in Attachment 6 of your agenda packet tonight. And the 122 square feet does include all of the three wall signs, the blade sign, as well as the welcome sign that's proposed. And even with all of those signs, it's well below what the sign ordinance would allow. And another point to be noted is, the former tenant, Bank of America, that was located in the same building, was permitted to have three sign locations, and again, I've included that attachment to show that there were three signs that were at some time approved. It came back to the city in 2006 to modify those signs to basically incorporate backer panels to three existing signs. So with that information, it does confirm that the shopping center's sign program was previously modified to accommodate more than two signs for this building, setting a precedence. And I also want to point out that the proposed Chick-fil-A signs are similar with established practices in the neighborhood and with other businesses of similar size and nature, and I have listed those on this slide, and I will also share photographs in the next slide. And the amendment tonight does not violate the signage limits in the city's sign ordinance, and it is consistent with the similar developments that are found in other neighborhood shopping And here are the Bank of America sign locations for the former tenant at the same location. As mentioned earlier, this is the only building with multiple street frontages, and that may be the reason why three signs were warranted for Bank of America. Chick-fil-A is proposing three signs, however, due to the sensitivity of the neighborhood, they are not proposing any signs on the east elevation, which would be facing the adjacent tenant Panda Express, as well as overlooking into Citrus Avenue, where the residential neighborhood is. All of the signs are closer to the street frontages, basically to get more identification or visibility for motorists going in all directions. And here are some examples of commercial uses with multiple signs. Bank of Ameri, sorry, Wells Fargo Bank in the Orchard Shopping Center also has three sign locations, and this is, again, across the street from Citrus Marketplace. And here is Panera Bread, again, a shopping center that is near a residential neighborhood. It is at the corner of Treat and Bancroft, and it does have three sign locations. And as I mentioned earlier, the primary sign that, that is near the entry doors is a five-foot-tall stacked logo and letters. And the third example I have is Starbucks, again, in a Rossmore Shopping Center near a residential area. It does feature three signs, and a 48-inch tall logo was approved through a master sign program amendment. And here, again, I just wanted to show that the Chick-fil-A at 2750 North Main Street does feature three wall signs, as well as a monument sign, and this is in similar scale and size of the proposed Chick-fil-A tonight. However, this signage at the North Main location is actually larger, and the C is five foot tall, whereas Chick-fil-A tonight is proposing four foot tall and 24-inch letter height, whereas the rest of the letters, I believe, are three and a half feet tall for this location. Yeah. So with that, the Planning Commission does have the option of taking either of the following actions tonight. For the neighborhood appeal, they could deny the appeal to affirm DRC's decision and approve the 48-inch tall letter height, or grant the neighborhood's appeal reversing DRC's decision. And the same action would be for the applicant's appeal, granting the appeal to reverse DRC's decision to approve the third sign location, or denying the appeal affirming DRC's decision, allowing only two wall signs for this business. And I believe that is all I have for my presentation, but I wanted to say for the record that we did receive a lot of opposition letters and petition letters that have been signed, and those have all been included as part of your agenda packet, and several letters that came up till 4 o'clock today, paper copies, hard copies have been provided to all of you, and paper copies have been placed in the back for the public. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and Claire Lai, the Assistant City Attorney, will be also available to answer any legal questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, and we'll ask Commissioners, Commissioner, Prizer.
Thank you. Senator, great, great presentation. Thanks. This is not typically, we don't often see sign applications or appeals or anything like this, so this is pretty interesting to kind of read through and whatnot. Can you speak to the, the sign lightage, the lighting of these signs? Are they lit 24 hours? Are they lit overnight? Do they have to go out at 10 o'clock when the hours are turned off, or how does that work?
That's a great question. I believe it's 24 hours, but we could have the applicant confirm that. They are halo lit, which we typically see in Walnut Creek and require the sign applicants to provide halo lit signage.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Anderson.
Oh, thank you. Very good. I'm curious about the interplay between the city standards and the sign program for the shopping center. So the, the city would permit for this standalone building four, four signs? Is that correct?
That is correct. One per frontage.
And the, but the shopping center's sign program would allow only two?
That, that.
Just a straight two, not, it doesn't matter how many services you have. You mentioned that they modified the program for the Bank of America, the building that was there then. Was that strictly for Bank of America, or was that for the, for any standalone building or for that site?
So we don't have any information except knowing that it was strictly for Bank of America. I believe the difference between the sign ordinance and the sign program is, the sign program is silent as far as, it doesn't distinguish or differentiate between in-line tenants and pad buildings, except I feel, I believe they modified, they modified the sign program just to call the Panda Express building a pad building, but the vacant Chase Bank building and the vacant Bank of America building, there is no, there's actually no language, no specific language that would differentiate in the sign program.
And so when the city's sign ordinance and the shopping center rules conflict, is it the most restrictive that's used, or do they have to comply with both, or?
Yeah. So the city's sign ordinance is what requires sign programs to be created if there are six or more tenants in a shopping center. However, if a, if a sign program is silent and doesn't have the specifics, then you do defer back to the city's sign ordinance, and, and that's what's happening here.
Okay. And on, on the letters, the size of the, of the first letter, is there a specific limitation on the size of a logo? I noticed there were some that were five feet or three feet or whatever.
Yeah.
Is there a city ordinance or a shopping center?
Yeah, and the city's sign ordinance, it doesn't differentiate between a letter size or a logo size. It's all, if it meets the sign area. So if it's within the sign area, if it's within the scale and architectural harmony of the building, then it would be allowed, and that is something that staff evaluates when we get proposals for master sign program amendments. We look at all of that. And so, I'm sorry, can you just, question?
With the, the, so there's, there's no specific limitation on the height?
Oh, yes. So exactly, the sign ordinance doesn't have any specific limitations, and then the sign program in this one as well does not have any. Some of the sign programs, I believe the Orchards allows 36-inch or 32-inch tall, and same with the Encina Grande Shopping Center, but they were also more recent, so they, they have, they have provided some parameters. But this sign program in particular, Citrus Marketplace, does not draw distinction, distinction, and neither does the sign ordinance.
Okay. For, for standalone, a logo?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and as far as letters, have there been other exceptions for a leading capital letter being allowed to be larger than the 24 inches?
Yeah, I've, I've actually provided some examples. Many of those were exemptions, either for the logo or letter heights. McCauley's.
Were those in the?
In the slideshow, yeah. McCauley's, again, it's in the Countrywood Shopping Center. That backs up to a residential neighborhood, and like I said, it was even similar as far as the script lettering. It was, I believe, 24-inch for the remaining letters, but four, four feet for the, yeah, So it was, the M and the C was approved at four feet tall.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you. We will now move on, and we'll may bring you back when we get with questions at some point. The first appellate, please, and you have 15 minutes. Which is, which one is it? Is that two? I believe it's the neighborhood. Yes. You have 15 minutes.
Okay. Bear with me a moment. I'll just lay it out on the floor. You get the gist.
If you could put it further out, we'd actually see it a bit. Put it on the chairs, yeah. That's good. Close enough.
I apologize for the artwork. I did try to stay within the lines, but I don't know if I succeeded entirely. My name is Steve Elster. I'm here on behalf of Friends of Walnut Creek and over 140 Walnut Creek residents who have submitted letters in opposition to Chick-fil-A's signage exceptions. The two questions before you tonight are, one, should Chick-fil-A be granted an exception to have larger chicken head signs at the entrance to the woodlands? And two, should Chick-fil-A be granted an exception to have more chicken head signs at the entrance to the woodlands? Chick-fil-A's plans for this location consist of a restaurant and a quote "meal fulfillment center," as Chick-fil-A calls it. So far, despite overwhelming community opposition, the city has approved everything that Chick-fil-A has asked for. Everyone will know that this prominent corner of Oak Grove and Citrus will be the location of Chick-fil-A's Restaurant and Chicken Sandwich Fulfillment Center. If one envisions what Chick-fil-A's signage exceptions will actually look like at this corner, it's clear what these signs will do. Given the elevation at which the signs will be placed, the excessive size of the signs, and the excessive number of signs at this corner, Chick-fil-A is asking to turn the entrance to the woodlands into a beacon of chicken head signage. There's absolutely no need or justification for more or larger chicken head signs than is already permitted. In addition to the community's concerns and opposition to this signage, Chick-fil-A has offered no evidence that its larger and more numerous chicken head signs are necessary to the success of this location. I guess it shouldn't be surprising how one-sided the staff report is in recommending larger and more, and more chicken head signs at the entrance to our neighborhood, but it is still disappointing. Here's some examples of the one-sided nature of the staff report. Letters from more than 140 Walnut Creek residents were submitted in opposition to Chick-fil-A's requests for larger chicken head signs and an additional chicken head sign. The staff report makes no mention of this. The staff report baselessly characterizes Chick-fil-A's chicken head signs as quote "a visually appealing presentation." Staff may find Chick-fil-A's chicken head signage as visually appealing, but we do not. The staff report compares this Chick-fil-A location at the entrance to the woodlands to the Chick-fil-A on North Main Street with auto repair businesses and car dealerships next door. The staff report says that the North Main Street location is some kind of quote "precedent within the community" for Chick-fil-A's chicken head signs. That comparison between these two locations is ludicrous. In making this ridiculous comparison, staff is saying that whatever is appropriate in any one part of Walnut Creek is appropriate for all parts of Walnut Creek, including that whatever is appropriate in the semi-industrial stretch of North Main Street is appropriate for the entrance to the woodlands. Is that really how simplistically planning staff evaluates proposals? What exists in any one part of the city is a precedent for any other location in the city? That can't possibly be an appropriate basis to recommend Chick-fil-A's signage exceptions. The staff report notes that the Bank of America building that formerly occupied this location had three signs. Naturally, staff describes this as a quote "historical precedent." In recommending anything a developer proposes, staff certainly loves to toss around the word precedent, which apparently means anything that staff has seen once before. I'm going to note here that aside from the matter before you tonight, anyone in Walnut Creek who has any concerns about any development of any kind anywhere in the city should be on alert that if something is approved one single time by the city, staff will apply its baseless approach and deem that to be a quote "precedent for anywhere else in the city." But even if one is inclined to regard the Bank of America signage as some kind of quote "historical precedent," if you look at Attachment 10, you'll actually see what it's a so-called precedent for. One sign approximately 10 feet above ground level, under an awning, with 18-inch lettering facing the interior of the shopping center. One sign approximately 10 feet above ground level, under an awning, with 12-inch lettering on the west side of the building facing Oak Grove. And one sign approximately 10 feet above ground level, under an awning, with 12-inch lettering on the south side of the building facing Citrus. If staff is going to claim that the Bank of America signage is a quote "precedent of some kind," I'm actually curious to know if Chick-fil-A is amenable to having its chicken head signage consistent with the specifications of the Bank of America signage. That would mean one 18-inch chicken head sign, 10 feet above ground level, under an awning, facing the interior of- an awning, facing the interior of the shopping center; one twelve inch chicken head sign, ten feet above ground level, under an awning on the west side of the building facing Oak Grove; and one twelve inch chicken head sign, ten feet above ground level, under an awning on the west side of the building facing Citrus. I, I really am curious if the Bank of America signage specifications is something Chick-fil-A would be amenable to. Perhaps the most obvious defects in the staff report is the cherry-picked excerpts from the city's sign ordinance. The staff report cites the sign ordinance for nothing other than the amount of footage permitted, permitted for signs. Well, for your decision-making process tonight, I believe you've been given relevant excerpts that I've submitted from the city's sign ordinance that staff decided to omit from their report. Was that something that was circulated?
Yes.
Okay. This is what you should keep in mind when considering whether to grant Chick-fil-A's requests for larger and more chicken head signs. Chapter eight, section ten dash one, point one zero one, point one, intent. Signs have a strong visual impact on the character and quality of the community. As a prominent part of the scenery, they attract or repel the viewing public, and their suitability or appropriateness helps to set the tone of the neighborhood. We believe that exceptions for larger and more numerous chicken head signs are not suitable or appropriate for our neighborhood. Section ten dash eight, dot one zero one, dot two, purpose, part B. It is the stated purpose of the city council to encourage signs that are of a quality design, pleasing in appearance, and are appropriate in size, materials, and illumination to the type of activity to which they pertain and the neighborhood they are located in. Again, we do not believe that exceptions for larger or more numerous chicken head signs are appropriate here. Part D, it is the stated purpose of the city council to enhance overall property values and the visual environment in the city by discouraging signs which contribute to the visual clutter of the streetscape such as oversized signs. Exceptions for Chick-fil-A's larger and more numerous chicken head signs unequivocally contribute to visual clutter at this location at the entrance to the Woodlands. Part E, it is the stated purpose of the city council to ensure that commercial signs are designed for the purpose of identifying a business in an attractive and functional manner rather than to serve primarily as general advertising for the, the business. By including a chicken head in its signage, the exceptions that Chick-fil-A seeks serve no purpose other than as general advertising for their restaurant and chicken sandwich fulfillment center. Section ten dash eight, dot one zero one, one zero four, general regulations. Paragraph eight, information on signs. Except for non-commercial signs, permitted signs shall contain only the name of the business, the type of the service rendered, and the principal brand names or classification of merchandise for sale. Here, Chick-fil-A, Chick-fil-A's signage goes beyond this regulation by unnecessarily including a chicken head. Section ten dash eight, dot one one one, exceptions. Exceptions to the city's sign ordinance can be granted if the sign size and placement limitations or aesthetic objectives of this chapter shall be followed as closely as practicable. The intent and purposes of the sign regulations, regulations shall be followed as closely as practicable, practicable. And an exception may be granted when it can be demonstrated that the signs are necessary to further a public use or public benefit. The staff report references none of these sections from the city's sign ordinance, and none of these sections are satisfied for the exceptions that Chick-fil-A requests for its chicken head signs. And I'll note that I believe all of the signs that were referenced, including in the presentation tonight by staff as examples of larger signs, are signs that are facing the interior of a shopping center. What's being ignored is that these Chick-fil-A signs will be essentially a, a beacon of chicken head signs at a very prominent corner facing the exterior of the shopping center at the entrance to the Woodlands. Staff's approach to this, this issue is that what's permitted in any one part of Walnut Creek, for whatever reason, is precedent for any other part of Walnut Creek. Again, that is a ridiculous approach that conflates all parts of the city. Instead, how about sticking with the city's sign ordinance and the master sign program for Citrus Marketplace? Two signs, maximum two feet. Chick-fil-A has gotten everything that it's asked for here, so this is your chance to represent the residents of Walnut Creek in this one regard by not allowing larger or more numerous chicken head signs at the entrance to the Woodlands. No matter what, we're going to wind up with Chick-fil-A's chicken head signs at this prominent corner. We implore you to not blight our neighborhood by allowing these signs to be larger or more numerous than is permitted. Please do not turn the entrance to the Woodlands into a beacon of chicken head signage.
Thank you. I'll start with the questions because I would like to know, where is the forty-eight inches? I assume you did that to scale.
Yeah, this is forty-inch chicken head. This is the size of what Chick-fil-A is looking to.
Starting at the top with the, the comb?
It's actually, I think, forty-seven inches, but.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Anderson?
I have a few. One thing that I was curious about as I came in here, as I looked at the, through the staff report and the other materials, was whether, because they seem to be treated differently, whether the first letter of Chick-fil-A was indeed a letter or a logo. And I think you've argued for the latter by describing it as a chicken head sign several dozen times and as a C not once. So for logos, there's apparently neither in the sign rules for the shopping center nor in the city's sign ordinance, there's no specific limitation, and they tend to vary from three to four to five feet or thereabouts in different locations. Why should we not consider a chicken head not to be a logo?
What distinction would that make, whether it's a logo?
Well, because the size issue is because letters are only allowed to be two feet tall. But logos don't have that limitation.
Well, it certainly serves as the letter C in their, you know, in, in the, the name of, in their signage. So it serves as a letter. Without that, then it would not be spelling out the name of the business.
But given your characterization, would it not also serve as a logo? I mean, look at that, and you know, it's Chick-fil-A, because it's, it's their chicken head.
Right, it's also the C that is the beginning, the first letter in the name of the business.
Exactly.
And I'd also note that in the staff report, they, they also do describe the, describe it as both a letter and a chicken head.
Right, so it is both.
It is both, but, but again, I think there's a, a big difference between this, whether it's seen as a letter or a logo, and everything else that we've seen tonight, which is, all of those other signs are facing the interior of a shopping center, they're not at the entrance to a neighborhood. If you drive down Oak Grove right now, you see, you see shopping centers and trees, but there's no one business that stands out. This is going to be a blaring beacon for Chick-fil-A if the signs that Chick-fil-A wants to put up at the level that they're going to put them up at the second.
I'm sorry, because it's not connected to other buildings?
Pardon? Because it's, it's right at the corner of Oak Grove and Citrus.
There are no other businesses on corners? I'm not sure I understand.
There are, but there's nothing, this is going to stand out like no, no other business in that area. And I, and I, I'm honestly interested whether Chick-fil-A would be amenable to the same signage specifications that Bank of America had, the same height, same size of lettering. That was something that I think would be acceptable.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Ward.
I, I just wanted to note that the staff report did include all of the correspondence that we received, and that, you know, I, I know I did, and I think my fellow commissioners read and considered all that information very carefully, including taking time off work today, because we're all volunteers, to consider late-arriving materials that arrived both in two chunks before noon and then directly before. So I don't think that the staff report is inconsiderate in that regard, nor do I think this commission has ever not considered very carefully and read very carefully all of the input that we've received from the neighbors. So I, I have to, I would hope that you would possibly correct that characterization in your presentation, because we are very careful in that regard, at least I am.
Certainly, and I recognize that. I was speaking to the written staff report that leads to the recommendations, but I understand that the letters are obviously part of the package.
The attachments included all that correspondence.
Yes.
So I consider that to be an entire package of the staff report that's provided to us. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, and at the end of the, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I missed you down there.
Thank you. Thank you so much for speaking with us and explaining what it is that you want us to look at in our consideration for the decision today. I did want to ask, so I think you mentioned that the, the position is that three signs is excessive, but two signs is sufficient? Is that an accurate statement?
Two signs is consistent with what's permitted here, and so if the, in terms of the number of signs, that's not something that we would take issue with.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and then if it were two signs, is there any preference on which elevation they would be on, like northwest or south, if there was a choice of where they would face?
I, I haven't given the location specific between which, I, I assume they would be facing as, as prominent as possible. You know, they're going to try to call as much attention to their chicken business, and I haven't thought about which location, which elevation they would occupy.
Would I suggest that, if I suggest that most prominent being the sides that face Citrus and Oak Grove, would that be a reasonable conclusion?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Last call for questions. Thank you, and you will have a chance for rebuttal at the end.
Okay.
The next appellate, please, which I believe is Chick-fil-A.
All right, thank you for allowing me to speak. Nathan Loveland, 4G Development. I represent Chick-fil-A as a development consultant. I did submit the development applications on this project, as well as the second appeal to allow the third sign. So in the appeal, the reason we appealed to start with that was because the master sign program allows two signs based on two road frontages, correct? And when we went to the original design review board, we spoke to them about the design of our building, and one of their concerns was that our entrances were facing the parking lot. So what, what would people do on the corner of Citrus and Oak Grove there? They would have to walk around the building, come in through the parking lot. And they said, no, we want you to put your entrances out on the street where people can come in. It's a, we want it to be pedestrian-friendly. So we said, okay, we will rearrange our building and we customize this building. This is a one-of-a-kind design, one-of-a-kind floor plan, and we will put all the dining room on one side so that entrances can come in from both sides of the building, from the parking lot, obviously where our ADA stalls are, as well as the pedestrian traffic and the side with the patio. And when the, and the design review commission said, we like that idea, we want you to go home, flush that out, bring us back some plans. And we asked, would you allow us a sign in our parking lot where we have a public ax, a public entry, both at the ADA stalls and at the rest of our parking lot? And they said, yes, that's a reasonable request, we would support that. And they stated that in their letter, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. We also, when we went to that, we talked about the letter height, we talked about the amendments. We asked if the Chick-fil-A logo could be larger than the rest of the lettering, because the master sign program did indicate twenty-inch lettering. When we get to a master sign program, that's a little bit vague, doesn't have all the answers we need, we go to decision-making bodies like Design Review. Hey, what can we do here? How do we work with this? Some of this language is vague, twenty-four inch letters. That is a logo, that is Chick-fil-A's logo, and it is a separate piece that gets attached to the sign. It is even manufactured individually, then it is attached to the rest of the script lettering. We also have some other options, box signs that have the Chick-fil-A logo. Those weren't a good fit in this area. We heard from many people, including the Design Review, they don't like that sign, don't put that here. We said, okay. These are scaled-back signs for this area, for this particular establishment. Every Chick-fil-A that we install, a five-foot sign with a five-foot, it starts with a five-foot logo, and we're about three and a half letters. There are some rare cases where we drop below that. Walnut Creek is one of them, where you have a four-foot, seven-inch sign on the back of the building, on the, on the parking lot side. And there are other places where we scale them down. The ones that are scaled down significantly, past four feet, are at an inline store. Maybe you see them in the airport, maybe you see them in a shopping center. We have a brand-new one in Pleasanton that is a inline store. Used to be a Sweet Tomatoes, now it's a Chick-fil-A. You'll see signage there. Those are inline stores, they're not freestanding buildings. So I just wanted to note that this was all carefully flushed out and talked with the Design Review Board. We went to a working session in May of twenty twenty-three. We talked this out, what do we design? How do you want to see it? What can we bring back? What we brought back to them a few months ago was pretty much everything they asked for with our, our requests that were originally stated in May of twenty-three. These are the signs we're looking for. Additionally, the, when we submitted our application for this project and we received those comments from Design Review Board, this hasn't changed. The entire package that went through the entire staff's analysis, that went through the original planning commission, that went through the original city council hearing, the original DRC, all of those had this exact sign package in it. We haven't changed this along the way, we haven't modified, we haven't gotten bigger, we haven't gone after anything different. We have been one hundred percent clean and transparent from the beginning in exactly what we wanted on this building, in what we, what we asked for in our applications. When we held our community meeting in December of twenty twenty-three, we had thirty-inch by forty-inch foam boards of the elevations and the signs on easels at the facility where we had the meeting. Our goal was to, was to draw input from the community. How can we, what, what do you think of our building? What do you think of the signs? What do we change? How do we make it better? The Design Review Commission is interested in hearing what the community has to say. They want us to bring the comments back. At that meeting, nobody cared about the building, most of it was focused on traffic, most of the, most of it was focused on all the other issues around the site, and we worked through and talked through that multiple times. Hey, but what about the building? We don't care about the building. We, we think that's a good-looking building, we don't want it here on this corner. We heard those comments, we understand. But we presented all of that material at that meeting. We know that this master sign program has its limitations in both the text, has its limitations on what signs are allowed, and we also know that the landlord has a desire to modernize the shopping center, to help make some of the things more modern. This was written in nineteen ninety-six. We know that the landlord has a desire to modernize this master sign program and to make it more fitting to the times that we're in. We understand that, and that's why we want to take a leading step on making these changes. And lastly, we want to note that we have only asked for the third sign on the third elevation because it is in the parking lot, because it does have a public entry door coming in from that side of the, coming in from that side of the parking lot. The master sign program tells us we can have those two signs on the road frontage. And sorry, yeah, the, the slides don't really line up. My slides that I have here, I'd like to flip through real quick, are just to talk to you some visuals real quick of what we have going on, so. Clicker. So right here, this is the Chick-fil-A, these are perspective drawings, okay? These drawings are, for the most part, they are to scale, not exactly. Those Chick-fil-A signs, that's roughly four feet tall. If you were to take a clip of that and bring it down and stand it next to the gentleman about to walk in the door, I think you'd find that that sign probably looks a little bigger, a little bigger on this picture than probably what five feet is. That's roughly, but that's a perspective drawing to show you, this is what we want the store to look like. Next slide. So this is a clip from our letter that we got from the Design Review Commission in May seventeenth in twenty twenty-three, and as far as their comments on signage, we support the MSP amendment to allow more than two signs and the letter height to be larger than twenty-four inches. Now, when we're talking about this sign, I also want to remind and make it clear, the chicken logo is larger, we're keeping the rest of the letters at twenty-four inches. They, and they, this is why we went ahead and designed this, this is why we went ahead and asked for these amendments, because back in twenty-three, we understood that these would be supported. Here's what it looks like if you squish the Chick-fil-A sign with all its ratios down to two feet, and you put it on the building. One of the comments we got from the Design Review Commission on our last visit, they don't like these blank white parapets. They don't like these blank white walls. They think it looks, there was too much blankness there. They talked about bringing the, bringing the stone veneer up, putting a different line across it, bringing our, you know, bringing our architect features up, kind of in, reducing the amount of blank space that's there. bringing our, you know, bringing our architect features up, kind of in, reducing the amount of blank space that's there. If, if a two-foot sign is put up there, I think that kind of counteracts that and makes the, makes the wall look even more blank. I don't think this looks good. I don't think this is what we would, or anybody would want designed at the entrance to their neighborhood. I don't think this would go down as people saying, hey, that looks really great. I think most people would say, what happened there? What, why, why did the sign get squished down so small? In this case, I clipped the signs, I brought them down. I don't know if the pointer works on a screen, but I basically copied them so that the perspectives can be seen. Roughly a tabletop is 30 inches high, you can see that the sign is roughly 24 inches. You can, the bottom of our windows sits at 24 inches, so you can see roughly that the, the perspective here is accurate. So this is also some elevations with dimensions. It's tough to see because of the size of the screen, but the Chick-fil-A logo and script lettering has been squished down to 24 inches, with the, the logo being 24 inches. Actually, the rest of the letter ends up right about one foot. Visual graphic of that. Here's an example of what all block two-foot lettering would look like. In this case, if we were to go with a absolutely no branding, no logos, and just go with normal block lettering, the square footage of the sign grows. So I'm not sure how we comply with making smaller, more compressed, more, more elegant, featured signs on the building by adding a bigger sign. The, the way you calculate the square area on the sign, obviously, is highlighted in yellow below. It's with all the lines drawn around the sign, you can see that the F is the only actual two-foot letter. Every other letter falls slightly below two-foot when we squish it down to do two-foot lettering. This is a four-foot sign, this is what we propose at the store in Walnut Creek on Oak Grove. This is what a five-foot sign looks like. It's only there to show how the area calculates and how the area grows. This is a standard Chick-fil-A sign that we start every prototypical model with when we start working with a city. And then we work from there, and we work our way down. At this point, I'd like to take any questions, and I'd like to see if I can't explain anything further. If I need to go back a slide, just let me know.
Thank you. Start out with questions. Commissioner Ward.
Would you be willing to consider turning off the lighting of the sign, particularly the one that faces Citrus Avenue, when the restaurant's closed?
Yeah, I actually text Chick-fil-A about that question, and the operators I talked to said, the sign lighting is connected to their building lighting. So at night, one of the last things they do is they turn their light switch off. So actually, all the lights will go off when the business closes at 10:00 PM.
Oh, thank you, that's very helpful.
Yes, and they're closed on Sundays, so there's no lights on on Sundays.
Other questions? Commissioner Anderson.
If you were restricted to two, two signs, where would you put them?
We would put them on our two road frontages.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Okay, so thank you so much for taking the time to explain to us what your intent is and what it is you hope to see. So, some of the things that I wanted to observe and just confirm my understanding is that, so normally, the, if there were no modifications to the, I guess, the size of the logo to the, with respect to the rest of the script, it would be five feet and roughly three and a half feet?
That's correct, the, that's correct. The standard sign that we would put on a building would start out at this. Now, just because this is the standard size doesn't mean that this goes on every building. There's many cases where we do shrink this down a little bit because it fits the elevations better, because it blends in with the lines on the building.
Okay, so then, with respect to the sign that we're looking at right now, the one that has a four-foot chicken head and then a two-foot script, is this modification made in response to community feedback, or is it more to, I guess, for the aesthetic visuals of the building?
Yeah, for the aesthetic visuals. And one of the things we do when we start a project is read all the literature about, in this case, the plan development, the master sign program. And we knew right away, two-foot lettering is allowed here. We went to the design team, we asked for two-foot lettering, let's see what we can do. We looked at all our options, and we said, hey, what's going to look the best on the building, based on the size of the walls, based on the size of the, those are parapits up there, is going to be two-foot lettering with a four-foot Chick-fil-A logo. And that, and we looked at the master sign program, and we looked at the, the building and the design, and we said, our best option here is to ask if we can have the Chick-fil-A logo two feet taller than the rest of the lettering in order to. And if we add two feet to each Chick-fil-A logo and we get three signs, that's a total of four square feet per sign, 12 square feet extra for the entire building.
Okay, and then I think you mentioned at the beginning, I just want to confirm this, that the logo can be produced or adjusted independently of the script? So it's not always going to be, you know, two by four or five feet by?
The ratios all go together. Right, correct. There's a ratio between the Chick-fil-A logo and the script, and so one went, one adjusts, the other one gets smaller so that the ratios all stay together.
And then, one more question. The reason that we have a sign facing the parking lot is because that's where the main entrance is, according to the building design?
A main entrance. There's two main entrances that equally serve the dining room. There is also a third-party meal pickup door on the side of the building, near the, on the side of the building where the parking lot is. I think the way we looked at it and the way we designed the building, it would be very awkward to come into a building and pull up to the back of it, and there's no signage on it. Also, if you were coming, you know, from the direction of Oak Grove towards Ignacio Valley Road, there would be no signage visible to you until you got close enough to the building to see the sign on the west elevation.
Okay, thank you, that adds a lot of clarity to what I'm looking at, what I'm thinking about.
Absolutely. And there's one more, one more clarifying point I wanted to add in my presentation, and that's why I wanted to clarify why we appealed the third signage. When we went to the Design Review Commission, again, leaning on what their recommendation was in May with all three signs, having their support, there was more discussion about the signs and more discussion about the signs. And when, what ended up happening was a condition of approval was put on our project that said, this building shall have no more than two signs. Conditions of approval, in our view, supersede master sign programs. So the way that condition of approval was written, doesn't matter what the sign program is in the city, it doesn't matter what the master sign program is in the shopping center, we've been now conditioned to two signs on our building for the duration of our existence. And we felt that, that actually was more restrictive than the master sign program, and that's why we appealed it.
Thank you, anyone else? Yes.
Would you, regarding, I understand that you, you had a special meeting to, design meeting to discuss, and you went out there and had, and brought the signs. I heard you mention something about having a, a new design of the building. That was, that was just for the two entrances.
So.
Right, because it's facing two different streets. So in, in that, you were trying to gather all the little pieces, but the building, so the sign, really at this point, the sign in its, in its, in its ratio is also a modification. Because what I've heard you say is, the building is a one-of-a-kind, so we had to, you had to change your typical building layout. And then also, the sign size is not one-of-a-kind, but it's smaller than what you typically have. Right, and all of these things have been in response to a meeting that you heard from DRC, a study session, and also community feedback. And that's what's driven or curated whatever it is that you have here, from the architecture, the size of the sign, the buildings, the entrances, is that?
Yes, that's, I, I believe I understand correctly. We went, it was actually a public hearing, a design review. It was not a, it was a, I guess it's considered a working session, a study session, but it was a public hearing.
It was a public hearing.
Here, a public hearing, and we came to that. We showed prototypical elevations, we showed our signage at that time. It would have been much larger, it would have been the five-foot standard signage on the, on the building, I believe. I'd have to go back and look at the elevations that were part of that meeting. But that was a public hearing session where we came, we presented, they gave us a, they gave us in-person comments. They also gave us a written letter of what they wanted to see us change about our site. And it was at that meeting where they said, we want, we want your entrances to be on the corner. We want you to come in from Oak Grove side, we want, I'm sorry, we want you to come in from Citrus Ave, where the, where the patio is. We want the public to be able to enter from that corner, as if they come across the crosswalk and they hit that, that crosswalk intersection, we want them to enter your facility there. We also understand that from a parking lot side, there, you're going to want an entrance in there as well. We don't want your main-only entrance to be facing the parking lot, where the city is seeing essentially the back of the building. So we customized the way the interior is designed, so that all of our dining room would be on one end of the building, allowing access from both sides. And it was at that working session with the, at the public hearing with the Design Review Commission, we asked, if we are asked to put a main entry on the parking lot side and on the Oak Grove, or on, this would be the Citrus Ave side, would we be allowed a third sign? We would have our two road frontage signs, putting one above the main entrance on Citrus, one on the road frontage of Oak Grove. Would we be allowed to put a third sign at the public entrance coming in from the parking lot? And that is their response, yes, we would support that.
Okay, and, and the reason I ask that is because typically speaking, from a sign perspective, where you have a door, an entrance in for a public, usually, I would imagine that is why DRC connected the sign to the door. So I just, I wanted to understand, like, this came from a thought process that DRC, DRC had?
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I do have one quick question. Is, most of your Chick-fil-A projects only have one entrance for the public into the dining room?
No, normally, there's more than one ingress. Normally, that's driven by local code, fire code, et cetera. There's, there's normally a main entrance, and then there's normally one or two other side entrances to the dining room.
But this is unique in that you have two main entrances, one from Citrus and one from the parking lot?
Yes.
Thank you. And any other questions? Thank you, and you'll have a chance for rebuttal.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And we're going to go to the public testimony, and I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney for a quick introduction to that.
So at this time, there'll be a public testimony. If any member of the public would like to make public comment, please fill out a speaker card, and you can hand it to have an opportunity to speak. Yes.
For speaker, please. Going once. Going twice, and I see no public comments, so we will bring it back for rebuttals. For the first appellant, please come up and have a five-minute rebuttal, if you would like.
In, in terms of other public speakers, I believe the community is exhausted by this issue. People turned out by the hundreds.
I'm sorry, just.
I made a mistake. I'm told I made a mistake, and it's actually appellate, the second appellant goes first. You will get your chance. You will actually get to rebut everybody else. Chick-fil-A, sorry.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just basically take this opportunity to say that some of the rebuttal comments, the, I've been on this project from the beginning, I was the applicant. This project did not get everything it wanted. This project went through rigorous reviews. This was a, this was a, I don't want to say a tough or a very difficult project. This project was looked at extremely closely. This project has been under the microscope of the city. This project has seen a lot of changes and a lot of deliberation and a lot of exchange with the, with the staff and with the planning members of this city to make this, to make sure that this store was modified, changed, and was a fit for this community. And I would just like to say, as I said in the original planning commission hearing, that I believe that the staff of this city have been a, a very true gatekeeper of this corner and of this community. And to, to, you know, to hear the comment that Chick-fil-A was just giving everything they wanted, that is not the case at all. And there were two years of planning and two years of planning reviews, responses, response letters, multiple studies, multiple edits, changes to the plans, to the off-site work, to the onsite work, in order for this project to get where it is today. And I just think that the, it's been, it's been, it's been a long road getting here. This project has not seen everything it wants, but it is a good project. This is going to be a great location. We are happy to be here, and we are excited to serve in this community. Thank you, and for that, I'll yield back my time.
Thank you, and now for the, number one, please.
First, to the notion that staff's discussions and proposals represent the community, that is false. That is patently false, because the community turned out in droves, in person. There was, I believe, a six- or seven-hour meeting regarding just this, this project generally. People have written letters. Staff is not representing the community. I'm here on behalf of the community. I, I don't believe there's anybody who's written in or supporting these larger signs. So that, that's just incorrect. In terms of early communications between Chick-fil-A and staff, the community was not part of those. I've been involved with this proposal since I became aware of it, and there was an opportunity to. And from the beginning, I've identified signage, along with other concerns, and gotten no, no information, no responses. I just said, I have concerns about signage and trying to find out more about it. The, the signage that's being proposed here is not the only signage that Chick-fil-A uses. We've seen signs, staff has presented signs regarding the North Main Street signage. Well, this is also, this is also signage there. This doesn't have the chicken head, does not have the letter, you know, it's not just the C that is at the maximum height. So it's not that Chick-fil-A can only have a sign that has a chicken head twice the size of the other letters. There are other options that Chick-fil-A itself has availed itself of. I would just close by beseeching you to please not brand our neighborhood as the Chicken Head community, which is what is going to happen if these signs are approved, with the exceptions that Chick-fil-A has, has requested. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will now close the public hearing. I'd like to invite the staff back and to explain to us what the, would be in the proposed resolution. If we did what, what is in the resolutions that has been proposed, whether we want to modify it or not.
The attachment one, draft resolution before you today is based on the information in the record. Staff is recommending to deny the neighborhood appeal, affirming Design Review Commission's decision to allow the 48-inch-tall letter height for the logo for the C in Chick-fil-A, and also grant the appeal for the applicant to reverse the Design Review Commission's decision, basically amending the master sign program to allow a third sign location for this business. That is the recommendation in the resolution. However, if the commission chooses to go with the other two options that are listed on this slide, you may choose to do that. And city staff, you could direct city staff to come back with a, another resolution to make the findings for those.
Thank you, so commissioners, comments?
All right, as far as the location of the signs, the number of signs, as commented, there was only a single precedent, and we're trying to, you know, so that everything will be as that precedent was forever and, and on. The fact is that in this shopping center, in this area, there's only one freestanding corner building. So the only possible precedent was the building was there before it. And in that case, the one freestanding building facing two streets and the interior was granted three signs. There's no other, no other situation that could serve as precedent. So having only one is, in fact, the maximum that you could have. So I think there, there is precedent for three signs. I'd like to hear more others weigh in on whether that's, that's a, three signs is more appropriate than two. As far as the, the larger chicken head, it does serve two purposes. It's a logo, and it is the first letter of the Chick-fil-A name. We've seen with the other things, there can be sometimes a logo and then one or two lines of two-inch, two-inch, 24-inch letters. There can be a. There can be a, a large logo over lettering, because there's no set limit on the size of the logo. So in fact, if you took the Chick-fil-A name with the chicken head, separated the head from it, added a little C underneath, we would approve, presumably, because there's no, no set limit on the size of the logo, we could approve the logo either above or in front of the Chick-fil-A lettering. But with the logo slash C, they serve two purposes. And because of the script in the name, they've kind of seamlessly moved the logo into the name. So it takes up less space that way. So it seems to me that, given the precedent of the way we've dealt with logos, and the way we've, the restriction on the lettering, that having the logo as part of the name, even if it's somewhat larger, as a logo typically is, is, is appropriate. You do want the C to be there, because having a logo and then Hick-fil-A is a whole different business plan. So I would, I would, I feel it would be that to, to approve the 48-inch tall lettering. And I'd be interested to hear others' comments on the two versus three signs.
Yeah, Commissioner Ward.
So I, I too find it rather compelling that the building in that unique location did have three signs previously, and each sign does seem to have a purpose and to make sense and to help people identify the building and how to get into the building, and where to park, and do all the other things you need to do with regard to that. So I think that we've talked a lot about wayfinding and, you know, advertising that our community is open for business and the like, and I think this is consistent with that philosophy. I am, I, I do also think that the proposed design is harmonious with the design of the building generally, and that to make it a different scale or size seems to make it less so. And, you know, it is important that we consider those factors. I also find it compelling that the sign as proposed is consistent with the city's sign ordinance, and that there is no clarity or specificity with regard to logos at all. So it also seems consistent with other logo signs that are found in similar shopping centers in the city. So I think that's important to consider. So overall, it seems to comply with all of the, the factors that we, that we've asked the applicant to, to consider and to comply with. I also was confused as blight being given to, as a reason to have, to, to turn down this particular sign, because it doesn't seem to be in the categories of what we would typically consider blight to be. It's just not that, I mean, I understand that the neighbors are opposed to it, and they don't like it the way it looks, but that seems to be a different category of consideration. So those are my thoughts with regard to that. And I, I think, and I do appreciate both the work of the neighbors to educate all of us as to their concerns and the values. A lot of people spend a lot of time coming to talk to us and submitting letters and generally participating in this community process, and I think that's really, really important. And I do greatly appreciate that. And I also appreciate the cooperation of Chick-fil-A in terms of working with the city planning staff and the various commissions for a very long time, some of which was under some rather trying COVID conditions as well, to try and come up with a design that would serve the needs of all of the different stakeholders in the community as best they could. And I think that, that's shown in all the different changes that were made over the, the years that this application was being considered. So I do appreciate all of that.
Thank you. Commissioner?
All right. I wanted to, again, as the other commissioners have done, thank you to the applicant, thank you to all the community who has shown up here to express their opinions and their views on the Chick-fil-A restaurant. It has been very heartening to see the civic process in, on the move, and to see it play out even here tonight. I agree with the opinions that the other commissioners have expressed, where I do see a purpose for each sign that is being proposed in the plans, whether it's facing one of the streets, whether it's facing the parking lot, as a means of wayfinding to find the restaurant, you know, from the larger community as you get to there. And then also, where do you, how to get to the entrances, because the entrance does face the parking lot. And I agree that the, the ratio of the logo to the script already does represent a modification to what otherwise would be a standard sign. And I think that does testify or speak to the, the applicant's willingness to work with the community and to help, to help create a space that is cohesive with the shopping center and the community, the community as a whole. I do like the ratio of the sign, I do think it is a good balance of positive and negative space. And from what we saw with the mockups, the four-foot logo and the two-foot script, I think is a pretty reasonable way to look at, okay, well, you know, here's the logo, here's how we can find the restaurant. It seems very, very balanced with respect to the negative space behind it.
Thank you.
I do want to thank the neighbors for giving their input. It just shows how much, we're not just going to let anything come into our city, and I think that's important, to be able to have a thoughtful process. And Walnut Creek is a city that is seen, and especially with everything that's been going on with retail. And so people look to our city for what's new, what's, where, where can we go spend our money, which is really what we want for our economy here in Walnut Creek. The other day, I, I didn't have the kedge, and so my husband and I frequented this area, and we went over to the orchards. And I had myself a Starbucks, this was during the day, and I could barely find a parking space, because it was bustling during work hours. I couldn't believe how packed it was. And as I was driving along Oak Grove Road, you know, you see the T-Mobile, the Mod Pizza, the One Medical, and it's, it's visually, you know, shown there. But as I was driving and trying to find like which coffee shop I wanted to go to or what store, it was nice for me, as I was driving, to not see blank walls, and I appreciated that. And you can see that attraction that's bringing into the neighborhood, and as you turn off Ignacio and you make a left onto Oak Grove, I, I felt like that was that opening that you saw, and it was such a well-thought-out design from an architectural perspective, the signing perspective, the parking, everything flowed. And I thought, wow, this is such a wonderful design, no wonder you have so many people here. When I read, I, we did, Commissioner Ward was correct, I took time off of work to read the, the correspondence that was received, the last one, number five, and I did receive, reviewed the Chapter Eight sign regulations. And the one thing that stuck out to me was to enhance overall property values. And we have some good friends that live near Citrus Avenue, and they so desperately want the revitalization of this marketplace. And the hope would be that with something like this, that it would attract, it would attract the people to bring people in, so that the values in that marketplace can potentially emulate what the orchards would be emulating. Now with regards to the amount of signage, which is the other question that we're here to, to look at, it makes sense to me why the DRC wanted openings. You want, you want to be able to not have a blank wall at each of the main openings, which is Citrus and Oak Grove. Sorry, yeah. And so you want to be able to have those doors. I personally would not feel comfortable walking into a door without a sign, I want to know where it is that I'm walking to. And so to me, the three, the three signs make, make a difference, and it makes sense to me, because they're the opening to the store, you know where you're going, again, that wayfinding that we're discussing. And also seeing the ratio of what it would look like at the top 10-foot high, I believe that's what it was, 10-foot high up?
It would be about 20.
Pardon me, 20?
Yes, yeah, it would be between 16 feet, the 20 feet is the top of the parapet, 16 feet is our ceiling, so it would be between 16 and 20.
Seeing, seeing that visual of the two-foot height, the only thing that came to my mind was, if it were to be that height, I would feel like it would be an afterthought, that you just placed it there, but you didn't think of the overall ratio. And there is a beauty to architectural elements all balancing each other, and I'm glad to know that those lights will be off, so that it blends and it doesn't become like a, hey, we're open 24 hours a day, because that is certainly, that's, in my mind, that's not the purpose of the sign. So tho, those are my thoughts, Chair, for the amount, and then the size.
Okay, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I would thank the neighborhood, because you're a very tight-knit neighborhood and a very vocal neighborhood, which is very good. We need that commitment to the city. I, we do need the signage, we need to do the wayfinding, we need something over the entrances, we also need something on Oak Grove to tell people to turn, this is where you turn to go find the parking lot. As to the size of the C, I think it's very appropriate to have the 48 inches. And I think we have consensus on that, is that correct on both of those?
I'll move resolution, in Attachment One, denying the neighborhood appeal and affirming the Design Review Commission's decision to approve the 48-inch-tall letter height.
A point of order for the, our city attorney, is it simply that appropriate, does that implement the resolution?
So it'd be a, a motion to approve the resolution. Did you want to read it out?
Read the resolution.
Just the title.
Attachment One.
So it would be affirming in part and modifying in part the Design Review Commission decision approving Design Review and Master Sign Program Amendment, and denying an appeal filed by Friends of Walnut Creek, and granting an appeal filed by applicant 4G Development Application, Chick-fil-A Restaurant Design Review and MSP Amendment.
Are you willing to make that modification to your motion? A second?
Thank you.
Secretary, please hold the roll.
Commissioner Quoc?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Klopp is absent. Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to item number five, commissioner, commission considerations, do we have any?
No reports by staff tonight.
And number six, commission members and staff reports or announcements, any announcements? Seeing none, I, we will now adjourn. Thank you for coming.